I'd like to call this meeting on October 23rd of the Planning Commission to Order. Before I get into the approval of the minutes, I'll just give the options to participate remotely. You can call into our open forum and our hearing later during the meeting by calling 415-655-0001 and using the access code 26311082816 with password 1234. And again, you can use that for the open forum or for the hearing later in the meeting. That being said, the first item on the agenda would be the approval of the previous minutes. Any motion to approve the minutes?
Chair, I give the motion approved.
Seconded.
All in favor of approving the previous meeting's minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The next thing on the agenda is the open forum. The open forum is an opportunity for interested persons to speak before the Planning Commission. It's generally limited to things that aren't on the agenda for later on. I know many of you are here for the hearing portion, and we'll have an opportunity to speak on that. But is there anyone here who has something else to speak to at the forum? Do we have any remote participants?
Chair, we do not.
All right. Let's go forward then with the approval of the agenda for the rest of the meeting.
It's been moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Other business from city staff?
Chair and Commissioners. Hi, Michael. Oh, sorry. We are hoping to reschedule the December Planning Commission meeting to December 11, 2023.
All right. Is there any discussion about that?
I'd like a motion to move the December Planning Commission meeting to December 11.
Right. Second?
Seconded.
On favor of moving the December Planning Commission to December 11, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We have a public hearing. Let's first get the staff report.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. The applicant Beacon Interfaith Housing Collaborative has applied for land use approvals to construct a three-story, 38-unit housing development on the four city-owned parcels south of TNT Automotive. Their targeted clientele is neurodiverse young adults. Half of the units would be affordable at 30% of area median income, and the other half of the units would be available at 50% of area median income. Their land use request is comprised of six parts, and I will address each in turn. The first part is a comprehensive plan amendment. The subject property is currently guided as medium-density residential, which provides for a maximum of 21 units. Because the proposal has 38 units, the applicant is asking to re-guide the site to high-density residential, which allows between 22 and 60 units on the property. Because the project meets many of the housing diversity and affordability goals of the comprehensive plan, and because it is located along a transit corridor that is compatible with higher-intensity development, staff supports the request. The second part of the request is a rezoning. The properties are currently zoned MR2 multifamily residential, and they lie within the Veterans Park Area Overlay District. The applicant is requesting a rezoning to MUN, Mixed-Use Neighborhood, as the dimensional standards therein more closely align with the purpose and intent of the Veterans Park Area Overlay District, and the proposed zoning is also more compatible with the proposed high-density residential land use designation. The third part of the request is a preliminary plat. Usually, plats subdivide a property. In this case, the plat is combining the four parcels into one. The size of the properties were reduced when the right-of-way was expanded for the roundabout improvements at Portland and 66, and it necessitated the redrawing of the official boundary lines of the parcels, particularly along the Portland Avenue side. The fourth part of the request is site plan approval, which is required for all developments in a mixed-use district not otherwise approved by a conditional use permit or planned unit development. Once re-guided and rezoned, the proposed project complies with all aspects of the zoning code except for two. And those two variances are the fifth and sixth parts of the request. The first variance is a 32 parking stall variance from the 43 parking stall requirement to allow 11 parking stalls. The applicant provided a parking study which captured the parking utilization at their three other locations. The locations roughly... The locations provide roughly the same number of stalls per unit and are, on average, only 60% full during peak times. The high cost of owning even a used car makes it very difficult for low-income earners to own a vehicle. As of 2021, only 16% of car owners make $50,000 or less in annual income. A goal of the VPA Overlay District is to minimize parking demand, and this project does that. Because of the facility's financial demographic, which is guaranteed over the next 40 years due to funding requirements, staff supports the variance. And the second variance is a five-foot variance from the 15-foot front-building setback requirement to allow a 10-foot building setback along the west side. There is room to shift the building further eastward to comply with this requirement, but the project team chose to request the variance in order to maximize the setback from the neighboring single-family residential to the east and to maximize the private rear yard green space for the residents of the building. It is only the northern 37 feet of the building that encroaches into the setback, and it is exactly in the area where the dedication of frontage for the roundabout project reduced the size of the lot. In other words, the practical difficulty was created by a past public action, and consequently, staff supports the variance. Per the city's policy for comprehensive plan amendments and rezoning, the applicant held a neighborhood meeting in May. In response to the concerns expressed, the applicant reduced the size of the units in order to minimize the building mass. He shifted the building further from the east property line, hence the need for the second variance, moved the smoking hut to the north side of the building, and offered to increase the size of the trees along the east property line. In conclusion, staff finds the proposed project is in harmony with and meets the intents and policies of the comprehensive plan. The project furthers the goals of the Veterans Park Area Overlay District and meets all zoning requirements except as noted by the two variances, which are both reasonable and based on unique circumstances of either the project or the property. The county has reviewed the preliminary plat, has indicated their support, and in summary, staff supports all six aspects of this request and recommends approval of the project. I would subsequently like to invite the applicant to give a brief PowerPoint presentation to kind of show the characteristics of the project.
Can you... Is picking me up the mic's on? Okay, thank you. So I'm Paul Melblum. I'm a principal architect with MSR Design, and our client is Beacon Interfaith. I will walk through a couple of items. Okay, so what you're looking at on the screen, and I realize that it is a little small, but this is the footprint of the building. What you see here is this big area, and orientation is facing north. There'll be three... I'll walk through three subsequent slides that speak a little bit of the bigger organization of the site. The Portland Avenue is here on the left. The repair station is here north of the site. East of the site and south of the site are single-family homes. We have... Just generally, we have a parking area down here, south between the building, and then the required parking setback. This is the property line right here. This is also the property line here, and then this is that area that Sam Crosby was referring to as that backyard area. And the... This is... I think you see it's a little bit darker here. That's the setback for the bus rapid transit station, and it's actually the combination of the cutback on the street for the roundabout, but also the bus rapid transit station, the area that Metro Transit and the county have taken for that, that have caused that northern 37 feet of the lot to infringe on the required 15-foot setback. In this image, hopefully, I'm gonna put this up here so you all can hear me. So what you see here, this is Portland Avenue. This is actually an articulated bus that was captured in the Google Map photo that we have. You can see the houses facing the street to the east of the project, and you can see it's a little bit faint, but the house to the south. The property line is right along here. Surrounding the project, these three sides, the south, the east, and the north, will be a six-foot perimeter fence, a solid fence, to provide privacy. The backyard area here actually will be completely fenced in with secured gates for the safety of the residents. These are vulnerable adults, so we want to be careful to provide a safe space for them. We're planting a series of trees all the way around the perimeter of the site. The residents east of our site had asked us both to, if possible, to push the building as far west as possible, and also to provide... To plant as many tall trees as possible to block views between the building and their backyard to preserve some of their privacy. This is a little bit, slightly different version of that same plan, but you can see each one of these circles, the large circles are trees, kind of planted all the way around, and then these smaller circles, what you see here and kind of all the way along, those are shrubbery. There is a walking path, circuit-walking path back here for the residents, and then this is a seating patio out here. We did, as Sam mentioned, move the smoking porch over here, and it will have a chimney so that the smoke is evacuated up rather than goes out horizontally. That bus shelter is right here. This is the entry to the building. I'll go back, which maybe it helps to see it here. This is the entry into the building here. This is the bus shelter, so people will walk right in, in that indented area for the bus shelter. If you've driven by, you've noticed that it's a pretty big area there. So that actually serves us well. Many of the residents will use public transit, so we intentionally put the primary entry to the building close by the bus shelter, so it's easier for them to get in and out, especially in inclement weather. We have a second access entry point here with the two handicap spots here, and also a five-minute loading and unloading zone for metro-mobility buses and Uber and Lyft and other types of transit right here. So the idea was that people have two primary means of entry and exit from the building. This is a street view from what you'd see from Portland Avenue. Again, here's the bus shelter. This is the main entry right here. There is a small trellis. It's heavily treed. One of the things when we met with some of the groups of potential residents was they wanted to preserve the sense of privacy and separation from the street, so we planted big trees here. You can see there's some existing large trees over here on the north, and then we're planting larger trees along the south and the east. This is a view of the backyard looking to the north, so the neighborhood residences are here. You can see the six-foot privacy fence, and then these mature trees. There are... There is a trellis out here, like a pergola with a seating area, and then two small balconies, one off of a Four Seasons porch on the third floor and one on the second floor off of the library. And then, looking back the opposite direction, I'm standing right by where that pergola was, and you can see the seating area here, and now we're looking back south with the building on our right.
Was that added at that Four Seasons porch area? Because that was not in the original plans. Because that was right there.
Yeah, that was originally in there. You can see from the front of the building, and again, I realize that they're a little small, the building is less than the 35-foot height restriction. The first floor of the building is going to be brick, and then the upper two floors of the building will be cement, fiber cement paneling with a kind of... Creating a bit of a rhythm along the facade, all the way wrapping around the building. You can see, this is the privacy fence, and then the little piece of the garage of the house to the south. This is looking from the north, so this is the elevation that will be seen from the repair garage to the north of our site. And then, looking from the east and the south, this is the east elevation, so again, those same materials wrapping around, and then this is the south elevation. And then, just the floor plans, which I recognize might be a little heavy to see, but this is that main entry. This is lobby area. I have two renderings that will come up, and you'll see of that. These are all public spaces that will be used for... By the residents, the residents meeting with the care staff that work in the building. This is a reception person here. There is bike storage right here, indoor bike storage that's accessed off the vestibules, so you come and you put your bike here, and then you come out, and you come in here. That secondary entrance that I talked about earlier, that comes in through here. These are apartments over here, and on the ground floor, this is a trash room and a staff room with some mechanical services up here. And then, if I go up to the second floor, this is the library here, a laundry room here. Again, this is facing north. And then, these are all studio apartments with a small meeting room here that looks to the south. And then, up on the third floor, it's the same footprint. The only difference is that this is that Four Seasons porch instead of being the library. And then, a few images of the interior of the building, the lobby. We are trying to make the lobby a place that encourages both formal and informal interactions with the residents with one another, but the residents also with the project... Or the property management staff and the care staff that will be in the building. This is another view of that, and you can see the receptionist sitting over here with the... There will be space for a second person also in the receptionist area. And then, my final slide is, this is one of the meeting rooms on the ground floor. Kind of a nice big space to get people, I think about 15 people around the table, or about... To provide enough space for all the residents to be in chairs and like a lecture format that they can all sit in here and have meetings where all the residents come together. That is the end of my presentation. Kevin, were you gonna get up and say?
Yeah, we would like to hear from you as well.
I'm sorry?
You're the applicant, right, from Beacons? Yes, we would like to hear from you. Sure.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, city staff. My name is Kevin Walker. I am Vice President of Housing Development with Beacon Interfaith Housing Collaborative. Beacon is a collaborative of about 100 congregations across faith traditions united around a vision that all have a home. In service of that vision, we currently own and operate 19 apartment buildings with about 700 homes. We've developed, owned, and operated affordable housing for over 20 years. We appreciate your time this evening to consider our development proposal, which we're confident will be a unique, high-quality asset to our residents, the neighborhood, and wider community. Astor Commons would join a neighborhood rich with community amenities just a few blocks down from here, including Bus Rapid Transit, Veterans Park, the Community Center, and City Hall. It would also introduce sustainable amenities of its own, including electric vehicle charging and rooftop solar readiness. It will honor both our residents and our immediate neighbors' interest in privacy and greenery. We also think that Astor Commons responds to at least two priorities named and adopted by the city in your 2040 comprehensive plan, particularly affordability and housing diversity. On the first, the city of Richfield has named needs through 2030 for almost 100 homes to be affordable at or below 50% area median income, with 2/3 of these named to be at or below 30% of area median income. We see Astor Commons as a helpful response to those goals in your comprehensive plan. Astor Commons also is designed to ensure that none of our residents will face cost burdens in their housing. As with many jurisdictions, 90% of the households at 30% of area median income within the city of Richfield are cost-burdened, and we work very hard to help support residents' resilience, housing stability, and make sure that they're better situated to support their educational income and employment goals, and thus better able to be vested in and a part of the community. Secondly, with regard to housing diversity, we see Astor Commons as something that will add to the city's housing diversity by adding to the city's housing stock of studio units. Less than 0.01% of Richfield's apartments are studios. In addition, it'll provide housing accessible to young adults who may not be able to move readily into homeownership, another stated housing diversity goal in your plan. We appreciate, again, very much your consideration. Thanks.
Before we open the public hearing, do any Commissioners have questions for staff or the applicant or the applicant's developer? Then I'll go ahead and open the public meeting... Or public hearing. Public hearings are an opportunity for members of the community to give feedback, and one of the exciting things about local government, and especially Minnesota, is how accessible it is and how close we can be with our neighbors. So we're definitely glad to see all of you here, and we're especially interested in hearing from people who live or work or worship in Richfield, or who are residents of other Beacon's housing. We'd be especially interested in hearing from those folks. If you would like to speak, please go up to the podium, sign in with your name and address, and then we will hear from you.
Okay, good. Always good to check the mic. My name is Scott Dawkis. I've been a Richfield resident since 1991, a longtime member of Woodlake Lutheran Church, and a retired police officer. I have seen the value of my house increase greatly since moving here, and while this has been great for me as an individual, as I look around me and take in the developments of the past decade or so, it's apparent to me that the invisible hand of the marketplace has not done a good job providing housing for those with low incomes, many of whom do the essential but low-paying work of our society. I live near the proposed site of Astor Commons, have been passed it many times, and have hoped for some type of development that could occupy this space. I am glad that Beacon Interfaith Housing Collaborative has come forward with its proposal for Astor Commons, a supportive housing development. I've also been an advocate for Beacon for several years. As a nonprofit developer of supportive housing, they have a track record with this type of development that provides a much-needed service that become assets to their communities. I urge the Commission to support this proposed development. Thank you.
My name is Reverend Hope Hetchison, and I serve Richfield United Methodist Church, which is a member congregation of Beacon, and serves many, many residents in the city of Richfield. When Beacon first came to us and told us about this development, we were ecstatic to hear that there would be more affordable housing right in our backyard. We see every day on our campus and around our neighborhood the need for more affordable housing, the people coming in and asking for help in services that we just are not able to provide, but that can be provided in supportive, affordable housing like the proposal that is before you today. And while we, as a church, we try to worship at Veterans Park at the bandshell at least twice a year, and every time we're there over the summer, we sit and we pray for this site that is just walking distance from that bandshell, and pray, and visualize, and just think about what a beautiful thing that could be there, right in our own backyard. Just this need that is so, so high in this community, and this really would be an answer to so, so many of your residents' prayers, so I urge you to support this proposal. Thank you.
Leonard Crosby, have we received any emailed comments, or is there anyone waiting?
No, there is nobody on the line, and no, I did not receive any emailed comments.
My name is Megan Webster, and I'm a Richfield resident. I live about half a mile here from here and have lived here about 30 years. I want to thank you for hearing this proposal. I've been a member of Beacon for several years, and I participate through my faith community, Mayflower United Church of Christ. I strongly support the proposed Astor Commons housing development for youth with neurodiversity. As a nearby resident and the aunt of nephew with autism, I think there's a great need for this. Youth with neurodiversity deserve equal opportunities for a fulfilling life. Astor Commons will provide safe and inclusive homes, enhancing their quality of life and promoting independence. I've witnessed the good outcomes that have come from other housing developments that Beacon has been involved with, such as Richfield 66 West. Embracing neurodiversity creates an inclusive community for all residents. Neurodiverse individuals will contribute diverse perspectives and innovation to our city. I urge you to consider the positive impact it can have on Richfield. Let's provide empathy, inclusivity, compassion, and understanding to give a brighter future to all. Thank you.
My name is Martin Dubon. I am in support of this development for a number of reasons. I see the value in Richfield, appreciate it, and love it. My oldest daughter was raised here, along with my family members, and we all hit hardships in life, and I unfortunately did. To make this available to people like me again would not only help me, but the future generation, because the kids are also going to hit hardships, and Richfield needs to remember that what this is all about is the kids, our future, and people that hit hardships. So I am in 100% support of this development, and I hope you guys approve it. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm a resident of Richfield, and I'm very much in support of this housing development. I think it'll help the city meet its housing affordability goals that are in the Comprehensive Plan. It'll meet a targeted income level that I think is just not really present in the city. I'm assuming that there are Richfield residents, young adults, who would like to stay in Richfield, and this will offer them an opportunity to have a housing unit of their own in the city. And I think the parking variance makes a lot of sense, because this population, very few of them, will be able to afford a car. So, and on this site, it's a great location, right on a major bus route. So I think this proposal makes a lot of sense. I think the site plan makes a lot of sense. I was a city planner for 35 years, and I think this site plan looks pretty good. So I urge you to support this application.
Can you hear me? Yeah, oh, perfect. This is my second public speaking time today, so I don't have anything prepared. But my name is Allison Linsmeyer, and I've been a resident of Richfield since 2016. And I've been really lucky to call Richfield a place to live. Back around 32 years ago, I was born and taken home to an affordable housing development, where I was able to thrive and be able to have a safe place to call home. And I know how much work and how much hard work Beacon puts in to make sure that everybody has a home. So I'm here today in support of Astor Commons development and hope that you also support that. Thank you.
I'm one of the few people who, not figuratively, but literally, this is in my backyard, I ask your grace and patience and understanding and a few questions that I have. I think I'm one of two people who actually live in that neighborhood. It has nothing to do with neurodiversity. I'm a physical therapist. I've been a physical therapist for 38 years, worked in all aspects of healthcare. I understand the need. My questions are more to the architect.
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm sorry. So this is a...
When will I have an opportunity to ask these questions before things start to go up? I will not ask the architect a question. My appreciation is there for the trees, the fencing. I understand the need of this in the area. Who do I ask questions about? How this is not only going to be housing neurodiverse people, which I am all for, love it, great idea, bravo, wonderful, but our understanding is that it will also have housing for other people, not just low-income, but people who may have beyond probation or have other aspects that they're working on. How does that work, integrating all those people together? Who supervises those people? Not the neurodiverse people, the other folks.
So, thank you. This is an opportunity for you to share your comments with the Planning Commission. So we appreciate that.
Okay. When will we, the people who actually live in that neighborhood, have an opportunity to find out more about the development? Not the people, not the neurodevelopmental people, but the other folks living there and the supervision of those people? And when will we have an opportunity to ask the architect other questions? When does that happen? I don't know another forum to do that in.
Sure. So there have been, there have been some neighborhood listening sessions, but in terms of your specific...
We were at all the sessions.
So in terms of your specific concerns, I think when we close the public hearing and have some discussion with the Planning Commission, we may ask some of those questions of...
Do you know my questions?
The applicants. Well, those concerns that you were, that you were just sharing.
Okay.
Can I just clarify a point? You can ask questions, like, the public hearing is for us to hear...
Yeah, that was open.
Yep. And if you wanted to...
Shut down.
And I'm trying to make sure that you do not feel shut down. So if you'd like to ask any of those questions and address them to the Commission after we close the public hearing, as we've done in the past, we can then direct those questions to staff or to the applicant as needed. But we generally collect all of the questions that are asked during the public hearing, and then after the public hearing is closed, that's the opportunity to get answers. So if you had questions that you didn't feel comfortable right now asking, if, you know, as, after other people make their comments, if you do want to re-approach and ask your questions, I would like to hear what questions you have, but I would ask that you direct them to the Commission and not to the public here. Yep. So, yep, yep. Thank you.
I just want to add that I would like to hear them, too.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, good night, everyone. My name is Luis de la Riva-Gazga. I live right across from this proposal. I had a chance to meet and talk to a lot of you people out here. I have to say, I feel tonight very underrepresented as a neighbor, someone who lives right across from this building. And I'm asking and talking to everyone here, anybody that knows me in the community. I was Vice President to the Richfield 4th of July Committee for many years. I love the idea of having space for neurodivergent people. I actually believe I fall under the spectrum. I don't know how I live my life, you know, coming to this realization that this is all very real. This is all coming up really fast. I feel so underrepresented. We talk about diversity. I really think if we were to look into the cost of all these units and the people that will be able to afford them, the fact that we have to pass, I think it was six different requests for adjustments, we will need more parking. There's 38 units. You mean to tell me that every single person living here is going to use six parking spaces? I don't believe in this. Also, I'm proud to say I'm non-religious. So the fact that there are so many of you here talking about faith and how it enriches your community, for me, I feel opposite of that. I was failed by religion. Religion failed me. So to have a building that manifests and represents an interfaith allocation group does not bring me comfort. And I repeat, I live across the street. If you ever drove by there, my Mexican flag hangs out there, loud and proud. I am welcoming of everybody that lives in my community. I'm always that smiley face. I'm very nervous being out here. I repeat, look around you. There is no representation. There is no brown representation here. I feel outnumbered. This is completely David against Goliath. We will not be able to say or do anything. If you tell me who I can talk to, who I can reach out to to say, I can't battle this. This is well orchestrated. These guys have been doing this for 20 years. We stand no chance. This building will go up. I have feel like I'm wasting my time out here talking to you guys. It's not going to change. I see the construction. I see what's going on there. Go ahead.
Do you have any, in light of what Commissioner Sturges said earlier, do you have any specific questions that you would like us to ask?
Yes. How much? Why, why are only a small number of units that are going to be for affordable housing? Why not all of them? And what is affordable housing in 2023? What is that? Who comes up with that number? I hear you guys talking about the median income. How are you guys coming up with those numbers?
And, yeah, and I would be happy to, we can have city staff address some of that at the end of the public hearing, because sometimes we, you know, we use that terminology or whatever.
And that's fair. No, we won't get, I won't get answers. The building is going to go up in front of my house. I'm outnumbered. Who's representing us?
So this is an opportunity for us to hear your concerns so that we can relay them to city staff, and also, as we make deliberations and make recommendations to the city council, we can get an idea of how people in the community feel. So we very much appreciate you speaking tonight, and we will, we can ask staff to circle back with those questions about income and so forth.
I don't think anything's going to change. I honestly don't, but thank you.
My name is Sarah, and I live across the street from the proposed site. I do not support this project. I, since learning about it, we, the neighbors in the area, have met and talked and discussed, and many of them can't be here tonight because of their work schedules. So I don't want to say without their being here that I speak for them, but rest assured that the neighbors are not happy. We are not happy with a large property being erected right there amongst single-family homes, the size of it, the height of it. I hear the architects talking about wanting to condense it. That just feels like you're stuffing a large piece of property in such a small lot. I know they talk about it being a good-sized lot for the, for the project. I live there. I look across the street. It's not that big. It doesn't feel that big, and it's going to feel even tighter looking at it out my front window. I also am not happy with the proposed distance from the property line to the fence, to the actual structure itself. I'm across the street, so I don't share the same backyard closeness that you will experience, but I'm just across the board very unhappy with the project and not with the philosophy of it, the location of it. We purchased that home that we've lived in now for 12 years, with the empty lot being there the entire time, and now I have to look at a large, multi-unit property. So, again, I'm here by myself, but a lot of the neighbors who can't be here today share my same views. I also second what Luis said about how none of us have been reached out to, connected, consulted, you know, if there's no questions have been asked from us about what we think or how we feel, any suggestions we may have, even if we were in support of a project like this. We've not been, or had those chances to discuss these things. And so the proposed architecture and size and the building of it, it just doesn't feel like we've had any input or a chance to even share our concerns. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm very hoarse, I hope, but I am compelled to talk tonight. And I would like to invite the neighbors that are so worried to go with me over to Creekside Commons, over to 66th Street, and see what a wonderful place we have, Beacon has provided to live. But not only to live, you walk in the door and there are people there that are looking out for them. There are therapists and counselors, and they're safe there. I'm a 60-year-old special ed teacher, and I was a special ed teacher when our kind of mentally retarded people were in institutions. I went down to Fairbowl, and I worked in a project in 1965 where we worked with developmentally disabled young people. We had them out on jobs. We had them living in the community. The people that we're going to house in that, in that housing are, will be the very safest neighbors. I want to say, I live at 63rd and Sheridan, and Luns built this tall building, and they look right down in our backyards. And we didn't have any choice in that either. But this beacon provides the safest place, and I really want you to know that the people over by Creekside at Mayflower, they were, so many objected. Now it's the most beautiful place, and I think, I think the ones that are worried, you shouldn't worry.
One's on 66th. We're not seeing the guy. It's right on the street.
I just, I just, but I just want to say that you're, we need this kind of housing. And I just am so appreciative that Richfield is open to developing this project. Thank you.
Hello, Chair and Commission members. My name is Judy Mo, and I live on the 6900 block of Fifth Avenue. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to come and talk today. I am the Director of the Richfield Disability Advocacy Partnership, and I just want to speak really quick in support of this project. It was actually five years ago this fall that I spoke at an open forum at a Planning Commission meeting and asked the Planning Commission not to approve the Comprehensive 2040 Plan without adding people with disabilities as a demographic. And they listened, and they did add that. And one of the categories they were added, people with disabilities were added, is in housing. And so I feel like, you know, maybe that was the beginning of looking at the needs of people with disabilities in housing in our community. People with disabilities right now are desperate for housing. I can't even begin to tell you, this is the work I do all the time at the Capitol here in Richfield, working on accessible, affordable housing. And people are beyond desperate. More than 50% of people who are homeless have disabilities, and hopefully this would help some of those people. People are using this word, "neurodiverse," and I thought, since it's kind of a new-ish term, I would just kind of tell the people who might not know what that means, that that includes people with diagnoses such as ADHD, autism, traumatic brain injuries, Down Syndrome, fetal alcohol syndrome, and many more. And I also want to go on record as saying that I take offense at anyone who kind of says they're okay with neurodiverse people but not other people. Everybody deserves a place to live. And I'm not ignorant about this project. I have read all of the fine print about it. I have researched Beacon. I have asked the city questions and gotten my questions answered to my satisfaction. I think this is a really huge opportunity for the residents of Richfield to support something bigger than ourselves. Could residents who live next to the development be inconvenienced by this housing project? Sure. But I ask you as Commissioners and as Richfield residents and neighbors of this project to try and look beyond your own comfort and think about, you know, if your son or your daughter, niece, or nephew were neurodiverse and had no place to live, would you change your mind about supporting a housing development that gave them a supportive place to live? I think that ultimately, this is about who we want to be as a city, who we want to be as Commissioners, and who we want to be as residents in welcoming people with disabilities into our neighborhood. 36 years ago, Frazier's Sheridan Court Apartments on Sheridan and 66th was built, and there was serious opposition to that project. No one wanted an apartment building in their neighborhood, and they made no bones about stating that they didn't want adults with developmental disabilities living there. because they were scared of them and believed they were a danger to the neighborhood. Sheridan Court has proven to be a great addition to the neighborhood, by the way. These old stereotypes perpetuated by eugenics programs that started with the Nazis and spread over to our country need to die. Unfortunately, there is a lot of misinformation out there, and Hollywood movies and plenty of other people portray neurodiverse people as dangerous, and this simply isn't true. As Richfielders, let's not give in to these stereotypes of people who live on low incomes or who have disabilities. Let's think about how we might feel about supporting the project if it provided a home and support for our own children or other loved ones, like my daughter Raven Mo right over there, or another family member, and let's support things in Richfield that we can be proud of. Thank you.
If there's no one else wishing to speak at the hearing, and we have no one online or any comments received, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the public hearing is closed. Discussion.
Just trying to recap some of the questions that I heard tonight. I'm wondering if staff could, or the applicant, talk about whether there will be, if, the statement that the people who will be living in the facility aren't all neurodiverse, but there's other populations as well. Could you answer that question and how affordability is decided? And there was a question about why all of the units weren't affordable. Those were the three that topped the list that I heard a couple people ask questions. Is that something that you'd like to?
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Sturso and the Chair. I, all of the units in this apartment building will be affordable. There are just two different levels of affordability. One is 30% AMI, the other is 50% AMI. The second part of the question that I can answer is that area immediate income is determined by the Metropolitan Council based on HUD kind of information that they provide. So it's, what, the affordability levels are determined by HUD, but then are drilled down to the area by Met Council, and then are in turn given to the counties and us. So, the part about how the non-neurodiverse clientele will be handled, I think would best be answered by the applicant.
Chair, Commissioners, Staff, yes, so with respect to, yeah, the population of the building, so actually 19 of the apartment homes will be set aside to serve people with neurodiverse conditions. The other 19 do not have a specific designation. So, and again, the questioner had, had asked about, right, folks on probation or something like that. There's no other separate designation, so it's just more generic 50% area median income housing. Thanks.
Do we, does anyone know what 50% of the area median income is? Like what income that is right now?
I, I do. And I also know the 30% area median income as well. So currently in 2023, again, as defined by HUD, the Twin Cities Metro area, 30% of area median income is $26,100 a year. Again, that's this year's number. That gets updated basically every early spring by HUD, either in February or March. So that's this year's number, and then, and it'll typically go up as incomes go up, of course, by definition. The 50% AMI number is, let's see, I have that here too, $43,500 a year. Thanks.
Chair, I've got a couple of questions. As you know, we've gone through many variances over the few years that I've been on the Planning Commission, and we ask many different questions. You know, one, one thing that came up is, I understand the roundabout was built in 2008. In answering the questions of where this could cause hardship, I'm wondering when the applicant bought the property?
It's owned by the Development, Richfield Development, Housing Development.
Okay, so then...
Well, the applicant, the, I mean, they, it hasn't been fully purchased yet.
Okay, so the, the hard part... Here's the part that I'm having a hard time with. I really like the project, but when we, you've given us guidance over the years as far as answering questions with, with variances, that it needs to cause a hardship that the applicant did not create. And I think the, the roundabout's been there since about 2008. My, my hardest part right now is the variance for the front setback, where the, where it sounds like the development could still go through, but the preference is to have the housing unit as far forward as possible, not that answering the question of it wouldn't be able to happen if it was further back, that it could be further back, but do you understand what I'm having difficulties with? It would be closer to the neighbors, but it's still, it would be able to happen. We've had a couple variances where we had to answer that exact same question, where, and I, maybe I'm being a devil's advocate here, you know, I really do like the project, but you know, trying to give the same bit of, look at this application as we do others, and making sure that we answer those questions in the same tone and, and with the same, you know, fairness that we've done previously. How do we get past that where it sounds like it's just a preference and that the building could still be built without that front setback?
Chair, would you like me to speak to Commissioner Sturso?
Yes, go ahead.
So, if the property line had not been relocated by the roundabout project, then where the building is proposed right now would actually exceed the 15-foot setback.
Correct, but...
It would not, so it is because the property line moved, not that the building was moved?
But, but the roundabout has been in place since, if I'm correct, since 2008, so 15 years ago. So that is...
The property line is being replatted with this project. Now, it is true that Beacon has not purchased the property yet from the city. They will be purchasing it for a dollar if the proposal is, is passed. And so I guess that way it's a bit chicken, chicken or the egg kind of a question, but I, I see your point.
And that's the part that I'm trying to answer and trying to get through, you know, and not that I don't like the project. You know what? I'm a disabled veteran. I'm, you know, I've been there, you know, when I got in the military, you know, with food stamps, assistance, and things like that. Everybody needs a break. But just trying to go with the scrutiny that you've given us guidance to over the years in looking at all of these applications, you know, I wish it was so simple sometimes, and I wish it would, you know, I wish we would just, you know what? This makes sense. But, you know, in all fairness to all the other applicants before us.
Brendan's asking.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I heard questions with a specific regard to staffing at the site, and also specific questions about, you know, is there enough parking for the people there? And I, I would like to give our applicant an opportunity to address those questions with the people who raised them.
Yeah.
Can you talk about cost per unit, like the actual dollars?
So, if we, would you be willing to speak to the parking, the parking variance?
And, and staffing?
Okay, I'm sure. Because I, at the work session we had, I don't know, last year, they talked a little bit about the, the parking issue, but I think it would be good for everyone here if we could hear.
For them to hear.
Yeah, yeah.
For their benefit. I have others for the staff. I also feel like nobody's answered the question of cost per unit in dollars.
Yes, Chair, Commissioners, and City Staff. So with respect to the parking, there is a, a good discussion of the parking in the City Staff write-up, so hopefully that's helpful. You know, we are accustomed to, and, and in fact, our, our full portfolio, in, in fact, entails units affordable at or below 50% of area median income, with a significant percentage at 30% of area median income. So this is a population we're very comfortable, you know, we, we, we know, again, how, many households in this category. Car ownership, as, as the City Staff report spoke to, it happens way less, especially at deep affordability levels. And so, and again, the analysis, and, and I can recap the math if that's helpful, but otherwise, it's all in the staff report. There, there's about a 16% car ownership rate among households, actually at 50% of area median income. And actually, even, even the Twin Cities Metro income is lower than the national statistics that City Staff cited. So even the high watermark, if you will, about the maximum incomes that they will earn, likely means it'll be even less than a 16% car ownership rate, just given the, the costs. And as everyone knows, you know, used cars even have become that much more expensive, you know, recently. So we, we expect that to continue to happen. You know, we did do a comparative analysis with three of our other comparable developments, and also found that of, of similarly sized parking lots, the utilization rate was, you know, roughly 60-some percent at each of those sites. And again, if you were to run the proportions, and again, the detail is in your staff report, it, it basically supports the parking proposition that we have in front of you.
I, I also recall at the work session that there was discussion of, people with disabilities often drive at a lower percentage anyway, so when we're factoring that in, that all leads into why it's, the projections for fewer parking spaces are needed.
Thank you. Yes, that's absolutely, so I'm just speaking about it on, at the income level, but absolutely if you add the, the neurodiversity commitments of this project, it will also further lower the parking demand at the building. Thank you. Yeah, that's exactly right. With respect to staffing, so, you know, we, we want to be clear, there will be staff at this building, just as there are with our other developments. And so, and again, the, it's consistent with that exhibit. There's basically comparable, if you think about proportionally, it's about the same number of staff that we're anticipating here. So we expect up to five full-time staff to be engaged. You know, the exact hours and who overlaps, right, that hasn't all been figured out, but just from an FTE perspective, how many folks will support this building? It's consistent, again, with that parking analysis that, that staff prepared. Thanks.
What kind of tasks do the staff conduct at the building? I'm curious about that as well.
Sure. And as it happens, we, we do have a, a service provider here. We, we've actually partnered with two wonderfully well-respected service providers in connection to our plans for this building. So we've had extensive workshops and discussions with Frazier, who actively, as many folks know, they're a national expert in serving neurodiverse populations. So they have a representative here. We also have a representative of Volunteers of America, who would serve as our primary service provider in the building. So certainly if, if the Commission would like additional detail, again, I know this is really a, a land use hearing, so I don't know exactly how that fits into the agenda. But, but certainly if you'd like either of them to speak, we could certainly ask them to come up, as you so direct.
Chair, I've got a quick question for you.
Yeah, go ahead.
So when we talk about 30 and 50% AMI, what does that mean in real dollars? What, what are the target rent rates?
I think he gave us those numbers exactly.
I must have missed it. I'm sorry, Chair.
It was 26,000 and 42,000 or something like that, right?
Yeah. Income levels. What, what are the target rent rates then? What would that mean?
Oh, the rent, oh.
Rent rates.
Oh. Right. So the, the, the rent rates are generally, they, they will reflect, you know, what it costs to run the building. The, the difference for the 30% AMI units, right, the units that are deeply affordable, is that they would have access to housing support. So that, that's a program that Hennepin County operates. So that will subsidize basically the difference of what, of what they can afford. So again, the, the rents might be closer to, you know, say a thousand dollars or something in that ballpark. And again, it'll depend on when this project is ultimately finally funded, because we update that, you know, with each year, and based on the affordability metrics with HUD. But, but yeah, just to answer the question, at the 30% AMI level, it's, it's subsidized in part with county assistance. That's how we are able to provide it at that level. Thanks.
You have other questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I did have some land use questions about this proposal. In terms of the very, the parking variance, it is unique. It's a big number for the variance. I'm wondering, A, I noted in the report that a development on a transit corridor is given a temper, is permitted to reduce their parking by 10%, and I'm wondering how that number was established. It feels low. And, and B, I'm wondering, given that it's a variance, I understand that the first two items go with the land, and my assumption is that the parking variance goes with this specific proposal. So it's my understanding that hasn't been funded. So if we do the comp plan amendment and rezoning, that will stay regardless of whether this project gets built. But the variances and, you know, the sale of the property and all of that won't happen if they don't get funded. If you could just confirm that, thank you.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioner Sturso. That is correct about the land use part of your question, in that the comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning would run with the land, but the project itself, if, if Beacon for some reason did not get the funding that they need to build the project, and the project does not get built, then the variances would go away with the project. So that, that statement was correct. In relation to your question about the 10%, I've asked Melissa, I don't know that history.
Good afternoon, Commission. I'm Melissa Paleman. I'm the Community Development Director and also the Executive Director of the HRA. In terms of the 10% reduction from transit, that's been in place for at least 15 years. It was established at a time when we didn't have bus rapid transit. It's a number that works fairly well for us on large projects, although it is perhaps small on a small-scale project like this, which isn't something we've seen a lot of, because it's very difficult to make the numbers work, as it is with this project. So long-term, it's something we could look at, but it has historically worked for us on the larger projects. I also, while I'm here, thought I would address the question of the variance and the property ownership. When you are applying for a variance, you can do so as a property owner, owner, or you can do so with the authorization of the owner. As the HRA has authorized Beacon to apply, they have approved a preliminary development agreement, and now a final development agreement with the project, so that if it gets all of its other approvals, they will be able to proceed and the HRA will sell the land. So the HRA has authorized them to apply for those variances.
I have a question for the applicants here. I, I see an application. It says that this facility is a unique facility that serves a population with a higher rate of mental or physical impairment that also impedes ownership of an automobile. A goal of the Veterans Park area overly district is to minimize parking demand, and this project does that. But the key sentence I'm, I'm, may applicant and City Staff can address is, it says, "Because of the facility's financial demographic, which is guaranteed over the next 40 years due to funding requirements," what does that mean? Which is guaranteed over the next 40 years due to the funding requirements. It's on page 10 of, of the application.
Chair and Commissioner Sturma, there's a, a couple of different ways that this project could be funded, and my understanding is that the funding comes with covenants that requires the project to remain at a certain levels of affordability for 40 years. So it ensures that these, the tenants of this particular building will be low-income tenants for the, for that, those four decades. If you want more specifics on the different, I think it's housing tax credits, I believe, is what the, would, the funding source would be?
Is this because of the specific funding mechanism at play here?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
But there's nothing in what we're approving that requires that, or is there? Requires the income? Like, the funding requires it, but it are approvals... Like, the funding requires it, but it are approvals tonight, or we requiring that?
Um, we are not, um, requiring that they get a certain type of funding, or that the funding come with that requirement. However, um, the project approval is specific to the project, and is under the assumption that it's a, that these affordability, uh, require, like, the, what they presented is what they are building. And if the, what they presented is not what they are building, then it would, it would rise costs to.
Well, and I would assume that the HRA is requiring the affordability things, if we don't have it in the planning documents, we would have it in the HRA document, right, agreements.
Commissioners, that's correct. Tonight, you're approving land use approvals, and so it's basically the envelope of the, the development, the size, the height, the site layout, the parking, the physical things on the site. The affordability covenants, um, are dealt with on the HRA side, as well as with, uh, Beacon's other funders, like, uh, Minnesota Housing, and HUD, and everyone else who's involved there. But yes, it would be guaranteed through the development agreement with the HRA.
Any discussion amongst ourselves?
Chair, um, I heard questions about neighbors.
Go ahead and.
Community meeting.
Would it be appropriate?
You can ask them.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, thank you. Uh, question for staff, please. I, I heard questions tonight that neighbors near the development have felt disconnected and not heard. I'm wondering if you could address that by talking about listening sessions and other community sessions that have been held. Thank you.
Chair and Commissioner Keely, um, there was a neighborhood meeting, um, that was sent out to the, uh, five-hundred-foot public notice area that we public notice to as a municipality. Um, the neighborhood meeting was held in, uh, the community center, um, back in May, and, um, I believe that, uh, Beacon was pretty good about giving out their contact information if people wanted to have follow-up conversations. Also, per our own requirements, um, we do have that five-hundred-foot notification, rather than just your standard three-hundred-and-fifty-foot notification that we do for all other land use applications. And there was a neighborhood sign that was been posted on the property for weeks now, with the applicant's name and contact information on the sign. If anybody had questions, they, or wanted to discuss the project with the developer, they could have reached out at any point in time. Also, staff's information was always available through the mail notice and the newspaper notice, they could have reached out to staff at any time as well.
Do we have?
Can I make comments?
Yeah, I guess.
Are we, okay, done with questions, comments? Um, I just want to say that this is a proposal that I think we all dreamed of when we were, um, envisioning the overlay district. Um, it, it, it is something that I think, um, I was excited to see the proposal, I was excited, um, to know that there was engagement in the community about the proposal, I was excited that the proposal was amended and, um, responsive to the community concerns. Um, I, I think that the parking variance is a big variance. Um, I think, uh, the factors are met, but I do think that the city should look at, um, code changes in parking minimums. Um, but I do think that, um, I will be supporting all of the recommended actions. Um, I think it is a development, um, this community needs, our community needs, and, um, I think it does well on that site.
Anyone else have comments?
Question?
I do. I think the variances, to follow up on your comments, I think the variance is a lot, but
I also think that this is somewhat of a unique situation, um, in terms of who will be living in that building. And so I, I don't know the practicality of bringing up if we should change anything else beyond that, I think this might be a different, you're, specific enough situation where it's kind of just going to be a one-off, um, to follow up to that.
We can, parking minimums is always a hot topic.
Yeah, in the City Council.
I had a question, Chair. A, a question for our Chair, or for City Staff as well, I, I, it seems like there's three different items here, the, the zoning change and the two variances. How are we, um, how are we going to debate this or vote on it, or, or are these three different motions, is this one motion, how do we go about doing this? Sorry, but I don't know how this logistically would work.
Sounds like it's four actions, I'm assuming one motion is, um, like, I would be comfortable making it in one motion if that meets the city's needs, but if the Commission wants to vote on it separately, I can make motions separately as well.
It was my thought that this is kind of all, this is one package that all of these factors need to go into play, so my original thought would be that it would be one motion, but maybe City Staff have a different recommendation for how we would handle that.
Can I, yes, I think in the past, we have done things with variances, um, separately, um, and we've, in, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, staff, uh, Melissa, you know, I think we've done most, well, obviously, most of these things have come in planning and developments, but I think on variances, where we've had multiple variances, we've done, taken each variance separately, um, in the past.
Commissioner Rudolph, members of the Commission, uh, in the past, it depends on the issue, um, I would say that in this case, because there has been, um, some discussion of those variances, perhaps separately from the other items, I would recommend that you, uh, address each item on its own.
Is there anyone else who wanted to, uh, say anything?
I've got one more question, and it really relates to the parking, you know, you know, and I get the parking variance, you know, it is a big ask, you know, but why we're asking it, it, it makes complete sense, you know, as far as for the demographics that are going to be living there, and things like that. But what happens if, you know, say, the building is sold ten years down the road, and it's just apartments? And all of a sudden, we have a need for thirty spots compared to a lot?
I think, um, Commissioner, that, um, we heard earlier that the anticipated funding mechanism is going to require forty years of, um, of a certain, um, demographic in that housing, and plus the HRA's, uh, agreements and sales agreements are going to tie up that property for specific uses that won't be market rate.
I just want to make sure those kind of things are covered, um, especially since it's such a big variance for parking, you know, and, um, you know, I support the project, you know, the only thing I don't support, and which I would really is the setback variance from, which doesn't seem like, you know, answering the question, could the project go forward without the setback variance? Absolutely it could. I think we could all answer that question, which, which then means we don't answer all three questions that are required for that, for, for variance approval.
All right, um, well, I was just gonna, uh, echo, uh, Commissioner Serse, that I am pleased with this proposal, and I, I, um, I feel one of the strengths of Richfield is the, um, welcoming aspect of the community, um, and how, uh, Richfield really wants to be a community of all, all kinds of folks, uh, living together, and this project will help bring, uh, an underserved, um, group of people into our community, and, and, and those who are maybe already in our community who need, um, you know, stable, stable and safe housing. So I will also be supporting, um, this plan. Any other comments or questions from the Commission?
I do.
Go ahead.
I think one thing to answer your questions about the, the setback is that, by pushing it further away from the immediate neighbors, you give them a little bit more privacy in ex, expense of pushing it towards the road, so that even the neighbors across the street would still have the street in between them and the building. And I, I think that makes sense, and the roundabout one is, I, I don't think there's anything that can be done, I mean, that, that was done so long ago that I, I don't, I think it would be unfair to penalize this project at the expense of something that was already done.
Absolutely, they all make sense. I'm going based on historical context of things that we've been given guidance on for variances, and that's all that I've seen.
Clarification on that, are you using a but-for standard? Is that what you're?
A what?
A but-for, like, with, without this variance, it couldn't be built?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying it doesn't meet? Is, is that one of the requirements of a variance? I'm, like, I'm.
I think we've used something similar in that, like, I think we had a, um, a couple parking variances that, you know, were, you know, things that the, the applicant did not, or whatnot.
I'm just looking at, um, what's outlined in the staff report, and I'm not seeing, um, in, um, the staff report that one of the requirements in this variance says this project couldn't be built without the variance. Is that one of the variance requirements?
Chair and Commissioner Serse, no, it is not.
So I'm, I'm actually looking at, uh, a document from the State League of Minnesota Cities that, um, defines the legal standards, eh, from the Minnesota statute, and uses, I mean, the reasonableness factor. The factor means that the landlord would likely, would like to use the property in a particularly reasonable way, but cannot do so under the rules of the ordinance. He could still build the apartment without the variance, or the building without the variance, but it would just have a different, it would still fit, but it wouldn't have, you know, where he would like it. Um, but, in all fairness, it does make sense. You know, I'm just going by guidance that, you know, we've applied in the past, um, you know, reasonable or not.
Chair Rudolph, um, you, you are correct in that, um, there was a statute, uh, state statute, that said, um, that called for an undue hardship before you could grant a variance, and that undue hardship was interpreted to mean that you couldn't use the property in any way, um, if you did this. However, a few years ago, the, uh, reasonableness standard replaced undue hardship. And the reasonableness standard, um, in terms of case law, has been interpreted to mean that the proposal before you is a reasonable use of the land. Um, and, and in this case, I think that is what staff was seeing. But you are correct, the undue hardship was a standard, and it did used to mean, um, that you could not use the property in any way, and it was very difficult to grant any variance ever.
It, it really was, and, and this obviously, based on that update, you know, um, is reasonable, which I think in the past, we've always tried to be, and use rules of reason, when, when looking at variances, and had a really hard time with some of them with answering all the different questions. So if that's an update from the state, uh, on the guidance for variances, that is huge kudos to lawmakers that run this state, because it's something that we've been asking for in the planning commission for years.
Sorry, break it down into these four.
Are we ready for a motion? Uh, I'll make, or, does anyone have, I, I don't want to cut the conversation short, but, um, if we're ready, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of amending the comprehensive plan designation for the subject property from medium-density residential to high-density res- residential. So this is just a motion for the comp plan.
Just split that into the four different actions.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor of the recommending approval of the comprehensive plan amendment, please say aye.
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 Opposed? All right.
I will make a motion to recommend approval of rezoning the subject property from MR2 multifamily residential to MUN mixed-use neighborhood.
A second?
Seconded.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm going to make a motion to recommend approval of the proposed preliminary plat site plan to variances for the multifamily residential development of thirty-eight units of affordable housing.
Seconded.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 And finally, I will, um, recommend approval of the Tach Resolution finding that the sale of sixty-six thirteen, sixty-six seventeen, sixty-six twenty-one, and sixty-six twenty-five Portland Avenue South for the construction of thirty-eight units of affordable housing is consistent with the comp plan, subject to City Council and Met Council approval for the aforementioned comp plan amendment.
A second?
Seconded, Serma.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, um, next order of, uh, business on the agenda is liaison reports. Um, Community Services Advisory, Commission?
No report, but I would like to say something, you know, um, I, you know, six years, seven years ago, I decided to join this planning commission, all for things like this, you know, people, uh, developments and things like that, you know, wanting to get involved, and maybe not think, understanding that this commission maybe listens to people. Um, and we had a very large development in my back neighborhood, and it's been a pleasure, you know, because we do listen to everybody, um, we do hear everybody, even though we may not always, people feel like it.
Thank you. Um, City Council.
I, I don't have a report.
No report for City Council. Um, Housing and, Housing and Redevelopment Authority Liaison?
Um, John Young was, joined the HRA, so it's a full HRA. Um, the HRA authorized the sale of sixty-three twenty-six, Fourteenth Avenue for the duplex, I think, um, that was brought up at a previous meeting, but they, the HRA did approve it. Um, and, um, I, assuming, as was discussed, the planning commission doesn't have to review that for planning, which is awesome. And, um, they approved a resolution supporting the Velodrome Project with Minnesota Cycling Center, so, uh, next step in that project.
All right, uh, the School Board, at the School Board's most recent meeting, they adopted some changes to the, uh, hazing and harassment policies, um, the normal, um, routine business, they had an update for about, uh, actions the last legislature took, um, and they had, a portion of the meeting was closed for labor, uh, negotiations. Um, uh, oh, and, oh, yes, and, uh, Richfield Athletics, a cooperation agreement with Holy Angels to add girls lacrosse to the high school. Um, Transportation Commission?
Uh, the Transportation Commission, um, held two meetings, uh, the main, uh, focus of, uh, I think both of these meetings was, uh, to discuss, uh, the upcoming Hennepin County plans to recon, reconstruct Nicolet Avenue between Sixty-Sixth Street and Seventy-seventh Street, currently programmed to begin construction in the year twenty-twenty-six. Uh, the county is beginning, um, outreach and engagement of, uh, what residents and the folks who use that corridor want to see for the street in terms of traffic facilities, bicycle, transit, pedestrians, and how to make that street, uh, work better for everybody. So that, uh, that discussion is ongoing, uh, the county is starting that process, again, it's going to be at least a, a, a three-year process until, uh, construction begins along, along Nicolet Avenue.
Chamber of Commerce.
Is that here?
Oh, yeah, he's not here. All right, Sustainability Commission?
Uh, the city's received a five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant from the USDA to remove trees and boulevards, confested with Emerald Ashbor, uh, that's ongoing right now. Uh, there was a audit of our organic waste, and there was found to be less than one percent of contamination, which is extremely good, and October eleventh was the grand opening of the new bike park at Taft Park.
All right, uh, Planner Crosby, City Planner, report.
Chair and Commissioners, there was no planning items for last month, consequently, nothing was taken forward to the City Council, so I have no report.
All right, I would, um, entertain a, uh, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
So seconded.
All in favor of adjourning the Commission meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned.